It is 5:30. We will call the Stillwater Planning Commission of November 16th to order. The process this evening will be to call for items on the agenda. The commission will hear staff support first, then open the public hearing and hear from those in favor and/or in opposition to the request. When you come to the podium, please clearly state your name and address for the record. After all interested parties have spoken, the public hearing will be closed and we will hear closing remarks and alternatives from staff. With that, we'll start with the agenda, public hearings portion. The first item under public hearings is MAP Amendment 2110 Huber Dender LLC and Ozell LLC, Care of Gosden Associates. I hope I got everyone's name correct there. Requesting review and approval to rezone from current residential, single-family, small lot to commercial general at property addressed at 1320, 1402, 1412, and 1424 West Lakeview Road. This was tabled from the September 21st meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Commission members Ryan Harkins, Community Development. You'll find a memo from staff to you on behalf of the applicant. The applicant has reached out and asked for additional time to deal with additional matters relating to this project, and so they are asking for a postponement of this item to the January 25th, 2022 Planning Commission meeting.
So we will need a motion for that.
And as a point of information, staff is fine with that request. We will re-advertise the item after the first of the year, just to be transparent.
I move that we table MAP 21-10 to the date specified by staff of January 25th, 2022.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. We'll now vote.
There's a motion on the floor to table the item until January 25th, 2022. Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Note that Mr. Allred is absent. Mr. Shanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Prather?
Yes.
And Mr. Hallgren?
Yes.
That item is tabled until January 25th, 2022.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is MAP Amendment 2113 Greg and April Streisner. Request of review and approval to rezone property addressed at 1223 South Husband Place from its current commercial general zoning to residential, single-family, small lot.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Commission members, again Ryan Harkins, Community Development. This is, as noted, a MAP amendment request to rezone from the existing zoning of commercial general to RSS, which is the small lot, single-family residential zoning district. You can see the subject property here inside of the purple hatch pattern, and you'll note it's at Husband Place and 13th, and Husband Street is to the west, Main is to the east. This aerial gives you an idea of the subject property inside of the red polygon, so this would be looking to the north, northeast across the property. You'll see it contains one detached, single-family home currently. Further visible on the street view picture here, so lot of backyard, off-street parking, single-family detached structure. Zoning map here indicates the subject property inside that purple hatch pattern, so you can see a mix of general, commercial, RT, RSS, as well as CB in this area. At the present time, the existing, single-family detached structure is a non-conforming use inside of that CG zoning district, and so the applicant is looking to make the request to rezone to RSS in order for the structure to be a conforming use. Future land use map indicates a number of uses in this part of the community. When you look at the up-close zoom on this with the subject property in the black hatch pattern, you'll see it notes "commercial" in this area, but it also notes a lower-density residential across the street, so this is kind of that mix and transition area, if you will. Questions of staff? All right.
Annie?
Thank you.
Is there anyone here this evening that would like to speak in favor of this item?
As was stated, we just want to bring that property up. My name is Greg Streisner.
Sir, could you state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Greg Streisner, and it's 1223 South Husband Place. And as was stated, we want to bring that property into compliance with what it's actually being used for. Right now, it has a dwelling, a single-family dwelling on it, and it's not in compliance with the zoning of commercial.
Any questions from the commissioners? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else present this evening that would like to speak in favor of this Being none, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak in opposition of the item? Being none, I'd like to ask staff to return and please present their alternatives.
Okay, so you'll see in the staff report provided in your packet that rezoning is the, the MAP amendment is the typical rezoning process in the Land Development Code. The proposed MAP amendment here would allow that existing use to be classified as something that is permitted use and would allow it to be a conforming use within that zoning district if it's approved. It would not impede negatively on adjacent commercial uses in any way that we see. There is a mix in the future land use element for low-density as well as commercial, so a block or a lot like this would be more of a transitional piece. Staff is recommending approval of the item. We don't see this as a negative impact upon the area as a whole. Having said that, you can accept the findings and recommend approval as requested. You can find the request is not appropriate and recommend denial, or you can table the item to a date certain if you feel additional discussion is needed. Any questions of staff?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
What is the consequence or the consequences of being out?
Mr. Hallgren?
Yes.
Can you please speak up into the microphone to the audience? Please, sir.
I can touch it until I speak.
Yeah.
Yes.
What are the consequences of the, this property being out of, what does it say? It's out of compliance or it's non-conforming?
What are the consequences of it being a non-conforming use?
Right.
Okay, so right now, it can exist as it, as it is.
Right.
The code does not specifically allow large additions to the existing structure, so it prevents that. If the house were to, for some reason, have something happen, and say like a fire, and it was a total loss, you could not rebuild the existing, single-family dwelling unit.
Ah-huh.
So rezoning to RSS allows the property owner to do those things in a way that's compliant with the current zoning ordinance.
So it would be a significant benefit to be conforming?
Yes.
Great. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
So all of the properties that are on the west side of Husband, they're across to the west from that, those were marked in red on your map, which is CG, correct?
I can bring that back up. So the block or part of the block that this sits on is CG. There is a lot that is RT, which is two-family residential. The blocks to the west are RT as well.
Okay.
So that would be a zoning district that would allow for a duplex or a single-family detached structure.
So it was the future use map I was thinking of then, that had the red?
Correct.
Okay.
So this would probably be on, at the time, what would be considered the fringe of that downtown-type commercial area, so this would be kind of that fringe and transition area.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Discussion amongst the commissioners or a motion?
I'd make a motion to accept the findings and recommend that the city council approve the proposed MAP amendment as presented.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Would Chanel vote?
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Allred is absent. Mr. Shanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Prather?
Yes.
Mr. Hallgren?
Yes.
The motion is approved 4 to 0.
Next item on the agenda is Specific Use Permit, SUP 2123, 2020 Investments LLC is requesting review and approval of a specific use permit to allow an adult care services center at a property addressed at 908 East 12th Avenue in the residential, single-family, small lot district.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Commission members, again Ryan Harkins for Community Development. This is a specific use request for an adult care facility. Subject property is here on East 12th, inside of the purple hatch pattern. You can see Couch Park to the south, as well as Hoyt Grove Park to the north, and then a number of other properties on the east and west side of this lot. Subject property is further identified inside of the yellow polygon here on the aerial, so this would be looking to the north, northeast into Hoyt Grove Park. You can see the tennis courts and the swimming pool, aquatic center area, and senior center to the south side of 12th. You'll notice that this is a larger building, a longer elongated property, almost a rectangular shape. This is the street view of the subject property, so this is what you see from 12th. You see the driveway that goes back into the parking area behind the front of the structure. The zoning map identifies this as RSS, single-family, a small lot, single-family residential. You'll notice the blue is the public zoning to the north and the south because it's city-owned facilities, industrial farther to the west, as well as general commercial, but immediately on the east and west sides would be that RSS zoning district as well. And the future land use map has a number of, a mix of uses or a number of uses, if you will. The subject property is identified as a low-density area of residential surrounded by park and open space primarily. The applicant is here tonight to speak to their concept and what they're looking to do, but do you have any questions of staff at this time?
I probably should have done my homework, but is this the same structure and location the Planning Commission had under consideration within the past year or so, or a facility that was going to be used as a type of halfway house?
You are correct. There was a MAP amendment request in the last year for the same property that was requesting to be rezoned to a more intensive residential district in order to allow a use similar to that. It was later pulled before it went to the public hearing with the city council because of the nature of how that operation would function. They since then have had a number of discussions and recalibrated their proposal, and hence they've decided to come forward with the specific use permit. Again, the applicant is here and can speak more to the specifics of how that works than staff can. This is what staff has been presented in their application.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions for staff at this point? Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we'd like to open the public hearing. Is there anyone present who would like to speak in favor of this item? Please state your name and address for the record.
Joshua Conaway, 3922 Oakcrest Avenue in Enid, Oklahoma. Good evening, Commissioners. Commissioner Shanahan was correct. This is a property that was brought before this commission. It'll be a year ago tomorrow, and it was approved 4 to 0 then. With all due respect, Commissioner Shanahan, I'm not trying to be incorrect here or rude. The proposed use is not a halfway house. It is a treatment facility that does not have any contract or ties to the state. It is solely there to provide therapy, education, employment, and housing opportunities for women who are victims of substance abuse. That could be alcohol, it could be drugs, it could be domestic abuse that come from a rough home life. Whenever I was here a year ago, I came as a civil attorney that practiced in Oklahoma City. I did a lot of civil litigation and transactional work. Since that time, I've had the chance to actually see firsthand through my new position as the prosecutor for the city of Enid, what cycles these women, and men too, but women, will go through whenever they are victims of substance abuse. We'll see them inside of Garfield County Jail. We see them, they get released because there's no, no room for them in the jail, and they get released before there's any chance to have sentencing done, and before their case is ever concluded, they're right back in the jail because they are in this endless vicious cycle. And so the proposed use of this, this residential facility will be a residential rehabilitation center. In terms of therapy, there's going to be mental health therapists, substance abuse therapists, and traumatic abuse therapists that will work onsite to help the women who are residents of this facility overcome this cycle that they're in. At the same time, there will be educators to assist the women to get their GED if they do not have it yet, and while they're working on that, they'll also partner, they're partnering with, the group is partnering with Meridian Tech and Oklahoma State University to secure further education and employment opportunities to get them placed in a job. With incoming education, we believe comes rehabilitate, a better chance of rehabilitation, that these women, following this program, will be able to enter into society, removed from the situation that was a problem before, with the life skills that they need to succeed in life following treatment. And the last program, or last prong of the program is to provide housing opportunities for these women after they get through living in the facility for 12 months, a 12-month period of time. Following their completion of the program, they will continue to come back to the facility over the course of eight to nine months to do checkups, continue receiving treatment, and for the, the women to complete the program. The, the two main concerns that were addressed last commission meeting in, it was November 17th, 2020, was first, safety, and safety then, just as it is now, is a top priority of the nonprofit that's been created to lead this, this rehabilitation effort. There will be staff onsite 24 hours a day, seven days a week. They do not allow outside visitors to come and visit the women at the facility, so there's no concern of ever any drugs or alcohol entering the facility, or people who may be interested in bringing those to the facility, even entering the neighborhood. They will not be allowed to come visit the women who are in the facility. That is one of the steps taken to, one, enhance the rehabilitative efforts, and two, to promote safety of this facility. And then there's also going to be locks installed and cameras, exterior cameras installed on the facility to control who's able to come in and out at any given time. And the second concern that was raised was traffic. Because it is a live-in facility, there will not be any increased traffic, noticeable increased traffic. We will have therapists that come and go throughout the day to make sure that therapy is given to the women, but in terms of having countless visitors, that's not going to be a concern here. I'm pleased to answer any questions that the commission may have, and if you'd like to ask questions following concerns raised by the community, I'll be here for those as well.
Questions from the commissioners?
I have a question. This is 2020 Investments Group, is that correct?
Yes.
Is that a group that is contracted with the state to, to provide this service?
No, no, Commissioner. So 2020 Investment Group is comprised of myself and my father back here, Scott Conaway. We actually bought the property for a different use. It was not intended to be a rehabilitation facility at all, but I was approached by, is Dee Miller is her name here with the city of Still, she's in the city of Stillwater. She is the one who has dreamt up this rehabilitation program, and she came to us and said this would be a phenomenal facility to house the program. I'm sure it's, it's, it may be unique, and it definitely, I find it very unique. It's hard to find a building that's large enough to house a project like this, but this is, this used to be a, Early Autumn was the name of it, a nursing home or assisted living facility, and so it's got the size and space needed to house, house the women that they're wanting to rehabilitate. So she came to us, there's no contracts with the state at all. The program will be entirely privately funded or funded through grants that are provided by, by private foundations or state governments or federal agencies. There's no contract with Department of Corrections. This is not a halfway house or a spot to detain individuals following their sentencing. Whenever they complete their sentencing, this is all done by private donations in an effort to see women be rehabilitated.
So they will lease it from you?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, does this organization have other facilities like this?
No, this is, this is one that's specifically partnering, I shouldn't say partnering, that's incorrect. They're servicing, I believe it's District 21. I could be incorrect on that, but I believe that District 21 includes Payne and Logan Counties, so the only people, only women who may be even considered to be approved to come to this facility will be residents of Stillwater, Guthrie, and the surrounding communities inside the counties of Payne and Logan County. And if I may also answer to, there is a screening process for women to come in. I sit on the board of directors for this, this nonprofit organization. Before anybody's able to enter into this treatment facility, they first have to be screened by, will be eventually prior women who have completed this program, but before then, the district attorney will review the applicant, the director of the program will review the applicant, and then there'll be a board made up of five people, all from the, the community Stillwater area, to review and ensure that the women who are seeking admittance into the rehabilitation program are first truly desiring to see a rehabilitative effort, and then second, that whenever they're admitted into the program, they will not cause problems for the other residents or the neighborhood in, in general.
What is the name of this group?
About Face.
About Face?
About Face.
Do they have a track record for doing this?
This, this is actually a very new program. It's, this, this organization is brand-new, but across the country, this idea of, of an intensive rehabilitation treatment facility, if you can imagine, the costs are phenomenal. They're going to house up to, at most, 18 residents at the facility, and to have what will essentially be about 10 full-time staffers at any given time to maintain this facility, to keep, we have people living onsite, the staffers living onsite with the women, it's a very expensive rehab effort. And so the, the country in general has not seen an effort taken such as this to rehabilitate women. And so we've not, we don't have a lot of data to see what the success rates are. There is a new one in Tulsa that has started, I believe it is the Kaiser Foundation, I believe, in Tulsa, has almost exclusively funded this effort, and they're seeing great success at rehabilitating the women, but it's still too new to say, you know, over the five-year period, this is the recidivism rate, and these are the people who've actually assimilated well in the society. We don't have numbers like that yet.
Commissioner Van Cansford, I'm the commission that... You're here to determine this appropriate use, and does it have a negative impact to the surrounding area? That's the question before you.
There will be 18 persons at the facility being treated, I guess, that's correct?
Up to.
If that's what you want to call it, up to 18.
Up to, yes.
And they will be receiving rehabilitation programs. Will they be the only one to, at the facility getting rehabilitation, or will there be visitors coming for rehabilitation as well?
No, the only people able to be rehabilitated through the program will be those who are admitted into the program.
Okay, that was to get at what kind of come-and-go there might be at the building?
Yes, there will be none. The, the system is designed to be a completely enclosed and isolated rehabilitative effort. The, and if it does, please, the commission to say, so the, the idea behind the enclosed rehabilitative effort, one, does promote safety, it doesn't increase traffic, we don't have strangers coming in and out of that neighborhood, but also it helps remove the women from the cycle that they were once in. If it was a rehab center where they come and go, and they, they go to, to a therapy session and then return back to the same home where drugs and alcohol abuse run rampant, it's hard to see a, a break of the cycle. So having them removed entirely from that environment and removed from the influences that encourage those types of behaviors allows for a better chance at rehabilitation.
So, so people can't come and go, but the people that check in or get accepted, they can't come and go either? If they leave, they're, they can't come back?
If they, if they choose to not be a part of the rehabilitative effort, then they're free to go, but they won't be able to return and continue treatment.
Okay.
There, there will be a stage later on, I, I think it's in the last quarter of the 12 months, where they will start being transported to and from the facility, to Meridian Tech, to Oklahoma State University, to work on developing some of those employment skills. So there will be some come-and-go then, but they'll be with staffers the entire time.
I do have a question. You mentioned 10 staff, so is it anticipated that parking for 10 staff would be provided onsite?
Yes, there already is parking there for 10 staff, and it won't be 10 at any given time. I should maybe clarify that.
Okay.
We'll have therapists there onsite, as well as a dietitian during the day that provides meals, prepares, prepares food for them. If there's any medications needed, there'll be nurses available to take care of that. And then over the evening, there'll be two different shifts where people, where staffers come in and monitor the facility, ensure there's anything that's needed by the women, that they are there to take care of those needs. So it won't be 10 at any given time, but over the course of the program, there's going to be roughly 10 people employed.
And then my follow-up to that, along the same lines as, as parking, if the residents were to have their own vehicle, would they be able to park it onsite and leave it for their time in residency?
They would be able to. There's parking now, you may not be able to quote me on this, but I want to say roughly 20 vehicles can be parked at the facility as-is, and that's just because of the nature of what it was used before we acquired it as a nursing home. There were a lot of parking spaces available.
Thank you, that answers my question.
Any other questions I can answer for you, Commissioners?
Are you going to keep that metal building on 12th Street?
As is right now, the plan is yes, but we, we're not using it for anything, so if the About Face program can use it, we're happy to leave it there for them. If they want it removed, we're happy to take it off. Thank you, Commissioners. If you have any further questions, I'll be available for them.
Is there anyone else this evening that would like to speak in favor of this item? Being none, is there anyone in the audience this evening that would like to speak in opposition of the item? Please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. My name is Mark Moore. My wife, Deanne, is over here. Could you pull the map back up for us? It would be helpful, I think, for us to look at this map. So my wife and I...
Mr. Moore, could you please state your address for the record?
Yes, it's 4823 West Country Club Drive, Stillwater, Oklahoma.
Thank you.
My wife and I retired to Stillwater approximately three years ago, and we had purchased one of the properties on the east side of this planned development, and we recently purchased the adjacent property on the east side of it. So we own the two houses on the east side of this development, so we're here really more for a fact-finding as to what is going on here. As I understand it, the applicant is seeking an adult care facility in the subject property. We've heard about the plans on this, and I think it's a worthy goal that they have. Now, the question that I have, and my wife has, as adjacent property owners, is how is this going to impact our property? We have heard that there will not be increased traffic, visitors coming to see these women in rehabilitation, and that there will not be additional parking issues. That is what has been planned. However, my question to you as commissioners is, if you approve this application for an adult care facility, what oversight will the city have to ensure the applicant follows through with their assurances that they've made to you, and to restrict visitors and traffic in the area? If you grant this application for an adult care facility, does that give the applicant a blank check to change the type of facility that is being sought, or will they be held to these assurances that they're making to you as a planning commission? So my question to you and to staff would be, should this be handled through a plan So, my question to you and to staff would be, should this be handled through a planned unit development where they have requirements that they are held to and follow through so that the adjacent property owners are not adversely affected if an adult care facility comes in and they change their plans, additional traffic, additional visitors come in? So, will this happen? So, that's my question as a property owner adjacent to this, is how will this adult care facility impact our property? So, my question to you, as planning commissioners, if you owned adjacent property to this, how would you feel about an adult care facility being placed next to your property? Additionally, as you, let's see, the map's not up here on the screen, but across the street, on 12th Street, we have a public swimming pool, tennis courts, two.
Mr. Moore, can you please step back in front of the microphone?
Yes.
Thank you.
I was looking at the map, kind of, here we go. So, on the south side of this property, we have tennis courts, we have a public swimming pool, and we have a lot of children coming to the swimming pool and to the tennis courts. And how are we going to ensure that the people coming and going to visit and exercise the visitation at the swimming pool and the tennis courts? How are we going to ensure that those people are protected from the persons in this adult care facility? If it is women, restricted to women, undergoing treatment under the scenario that the applicant has submitted, it sounds like it would be okay. However, if you grant zoning to an adult care facility, what would change, or what would keep the applicant from converting this adult care facility to a treatment center for men or other individuals under different scenarios? How will this property be restricted to the manner in which the applicant is seeking to use that? So, these are the questions that I have for you and for staff, and again, my question is, would this be handled better through a planned unit development to ensure that the applicant uses the property in the manner that the applicant is seeking to use it, rather than giving the applicant a blank check to use this as adult care facility for however the applicant seeks to use it? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Staff?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. So, to address each of those point by point, first of all, a specific use permit is designed to allow for, A, again, by its nature of title, specific use. It is for one specific thing. In this case, it would be a treatment facility for women dealing with abuse and substance abuse issues, mental health issues. With that said, that specifically would mean it could not be converted to other things. With regard to the PUD requirement, or the PUD idea, the lot for the subject property is 8,000 square feet. City Code has a minimum of one acre for planned unit developments, so that's not an option in this case. Excuse me. Having said that, if the specific use permit were granted for this concept, or this proposal, staff would have the ability to, as part of the approval process, inspect annually to see that conditions were maintained, and if any conditions were put on beyond what the applicant is stipulating by planning commission or by council, ultimately, those would be things we would look at as well. So, in an annual inspection, we would, staff would be onsite looking at, is the still, parking still sufficient? Is it still 10 staff? Is it still a maximum of 18 occupants? Those types of things we would be looking at. Are there impacts upon adjacent properties that weren't anticipated or that have changed? And if those things are visible and present, then we could bring the matter up to the applicant or the property owner to address, and if they couldn't be addressed, we could bring the matter back to Planning Commission and City Council for review.
Thank you.
Could I ask a question?
Yes.
Are all specific use permits handled this way, annual visits?
They should be, they don't, they are not always. In many cases, specific use permits don't get a lot of annual reviews. Some of them do, just by the nature of what they are. For example, medical marijuana dispensaries or grow facilities have an annual relicensing requirement, so staff is doing that anyway as part of that process.
But I imagine if someone made a, sent a question about a particular property that had a specific use permit for it, you would be alerted to...
If we were alerted to that, we would go out and do a visual inspection.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question to follow up to that.
Okay, please, Mr. Moore. You want to return to the podium?
So, if I heard staff correctly, you said a planned unit development requires a minimum of one acre?
Correct.
And this property?
8,000 square feet.
Is not one acre?
No, it's not.
How many, what?
What we were given was 8,000 square feet.
Okay, does that include all the lot?
That's what we were told in the application, yes.
Okay, because I'm, well, I would submit that there isn't, as you see, this lot goes back to Boomer Creek, and I would submit that it does encompass one acre, but...
I'd like the applicant to speak to the property size better than what we can.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Conaway, would you mind returning?
The county assessor page has listed at 1.91 acres. If I incorrectly submitted a number on the application, I apologize to that. It is over one acre. I did work with Mr. Lance Gross, as well as the city manager, Mr. Nickle, Norm McNickle, to determine the best route to accomplish the rezoning. We wanted to take the least restrictive approach possible to allow this facility to operate as it's designed to operate, and this specific use permit puts a very solid cap on what can and cannot be used. Whenever I first appealed to the commission, I wanted a rezoning to RMU. That was what I thought was the best answer, to allow this facility to operate, which is a drastic change from RSS. This specific use permit retains the RSS zoning, it only allows what is already determined by the City Council and the ordinances of the City of Stillwater to operate an adult care facility through a specific use permit. And if I may add one more thing in response to a safety question that was raised, I want to reiterate, the residents of this facility will be very, very strongly vetted. They will not be able to come and go as they please, they're going to be there for rehabilitation. As opposed to the properties used to the east of the facility that I believe are both Airbnb or VRBO short-term vacation rentals, complete strangers are able to come and go into that neighborhood as desired by the landowner or those who choose to book those facilities. There's actually been studies completed across the nation that there has been an increase in crime surrounding increased rates of Airbnbs and VRBOs. However, this commission found that that was not a concern or any issue here, neither did the applicant of those properties to get that change into a short-term vacation rental. The individuals staying at this facility will be very, very, will maintain a very, very safe neighborhood. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition of this item? Seeing none, staff, could you please return and present your findings?
So, under the current Land Development Code, adult care facilities are allowed in the RSS zoning district, but only with a specific use permit. Staff feels there is sufficient parking for staff and residents under this proposal. The county plan calls for a low-density residential use in this part of the community. We feel like this is something that can blend in easily, and in this case, the specific use permit process has flexibility to allow conditions that would be similar eventually, potentially, to what you would see in a planned unit development. With that being said, your alternatives are to accept findings and recommend the council approve the SUP request as presented. You can accept the findings and recommend council approve the specific use permit request with conditions that would be necessary in your mind to mitigate the impact on adjacent properties. You can find that this SUP is not an appropriate request and recommend denial to City Council, but if you feel there's additional information or discussion needed, you can table this item to a date certain. Questions of staff?
Okay. Thank you. Discussion among the commissioners.
I would like to move that the application be approved. If you need it stated in a more official way.
So, is the motion to recommend the City Council approve this proposed specific use permit as presented? Excuse me, my voice.
Alternative number one is written in our packet. Is that your motion?
Yes.
In your motion, you can read alternative number one out loud as your motion?
Yes, do you want me to read it?
That'd be great, please.
I move to accept findings and recommend that the City Council approve the proposed specific use permit as presented.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second, and we shall now vote.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Allred is absent. Mr. Shanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Prather?
Yes.
Mr. Hallgren?
Yes.
The motion is approved, four to zero.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the meeting summary review from the regular meeting of October Are there any corrections, or additions, or possible motion?
I move that we accept the meeting summary of October 19th, 2021.
I have a motion to accept, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to accept the minutes from the October 19th meeting, we shall now vote.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Allred is absent. Mr. Shanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Prather?
Yes.
Mr. Hallgren?
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
Okay. Next item on the agenda would be miscellaneous items from staff, planning commissioners, or city attorney for discussion and possible action. I don't believe we have anything. The next planning commission meeting is scheduled for December 7th. With that, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
Hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, we shall now vote.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Allred is absent. Mr. Shanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Prather?
Yes.
Mr. Hallgren?
Yes.
We stand adjourned.